Thank you for attending the board meeting tonight on February 26, 2024. Really excited to see all of you here. This evening's agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. Printed agendas are available for our guests at the back of the room, or you may find the agenda on your mobile device by connecting to the district's website. Click on "our district" link and select "Board of Education," then follow the "Board Docs" link to our current meeting agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 7.01. The first set of comments is relative to Agenda Items 8.01 through 12.05. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.01. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room. Each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Valentine?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Will you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. And next up is District Highlights and Recognizations. Ms. Altman and Ms. Nancy Baker? Oh.
Thank you all so much for being here. We are really excited to have Westerville Parent Council here with us tonight. And I just have to say, this is not on the script, but Parent Council is so incredible and such an integral part of our district, and I just want to thank every person and every organization that helps make Parent Council happen. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And I would like to call up Ryan Hilberts, who's the president of the Westerville Parent Council, to join me. For those who don't know, Westerville Parent Council is a nonprofit organization, and it unifies 35 member groups, including PTAs, PTOs, PTSAs, booster and community organizations. And they provide an avenue for collaboration, support, and the sharing of district-wide information to help make sure that all of our families are engaged and connected to the district. And so Ryan is here to share the great work of these groups, and would love to have you come up. Thank you so much, Ryan.
Thank you, Mrs. Altman. As she said, Parent Council is a 501(c)(3) organization. We are essentially a district-wide PTA that brings the mission of national PTA to Westerville schools. The mission being to make every child's potential a reality by engaging and empowering communities to advocate for all children. Locally, our goal is to do the most of the best that we can to ensure school organizations enhance the experience of every student in Westerville schools. The Westerville Parent Council is pleased to share our support data findings for the 2022-2023 school year with the Westerville Board of Education in our community. For the 2022-2023 school year, 21 of our 35 groups reported. Our member groups, along with Parent Council, supported graduating seniors from all high schools, with scholarships totaling $42,200 for post-secondary education. Additional monetary support provided by member groups in fiscal year '23 collectively totaled This is support that comes in the form of programs, projects, activities, that enhance educational extracurricular well-being of students, field trips, playground improvements, technology support. That money is raised through a multitude of fundraising initiatives contributing to the thousands of hours of volunteer time that I'm about to talk about. Those numbers are impressive. They are greatly surpassed by the sheer volume of volunteer hours contributed by these groups. Volunteers in our member groups reported 151,353 hours of donated time in areas such as music, athletic, art, theater support, literary initiatives, student leadership programs, tutoring, mentoring, social events, and countless clubs and experiences beyond the classroom. For a little fun math, those reported hours were the equivalent of $1,528,665 if those volunteers had been paid minimum wage in the state of Ohio in 2023. Those hours are also the equivalent of $2,194,618 in compensation if they had been paid at the lowest per hour rate for a Westerville schools' contract employee. To think of them one other way, those 150,000-plus hours is just more than the equivalent of 102 full-time Westerville staff members. So, calculations aside, I hope that that does show the support of our groups in our district being as invaluable as it really is. We always encourage families and community members, connect with groups, share whatever is the best fit for them. For some, it's time; for some, it's talent; for some, it's treasure, and all of it is extremely priceless. Thank you very much for your time.
Ryan, thank you. Always, Ryan is there to help, give advice, give good ideas, and we appreciate you, we appreciate your partnership so very much. I want to give Ryan another hand, okay? And as Jen Altman said, we do want to thank everyone here for all of the work and support that you and all of the other volunteers give. We are beyond grateful for all of you and to all of you. And we'd like to give each of you a certificate of commendation with sincere gratitude for all of our remarkable volunteers for their generous giving of time and talent and treasure, and their continuing legacy of enhancing the educational and extracurricular experience for all of the students in the district. Now, we will call up the community groups that are here, and we will say the names of those we know are here. If I don't say your name, and you're here, obviously, I would like you to come and tell me so I can say your name. All righty. So first, we have the Special Needs Preschool PTA. We have the Alcott Elementary School PTA, represented by Jennifer Reed. We have Ann Hurst Elementary School PTA. Charrington Elementary School PTA. Emerson Elementary School PTA, represented by Jen Bechtold. We have Faus Elementary School PTO, represented by Tanya Hewitt. We have Hanby Elementary School PTA, represented by Alexander Meck. We have Hawthorne Elementary School PTO. Huber Ridge Elementary School PTA. Mark Twain Elementary School PTA. McVeigh Elementary School PTA. Minerva France Elementary School PTA, represented by Alicia Dehaven. We have Point View Elementary School PTA, represented by Tracy Wentz. We have Robert Frost Elementary School PTA, represented by Cassie Mum. Whittier Elementary School PTA. Wilder Elementary School PTA, represented by Lori Matzer. We have Blendon Middle School PTO. Genoa Middle School PTSA, represented by Kim Love. Heritage Middle School PTSA. Minerva Park Middle School PTSA. Walnut Springs Middle School PTSA. Westerville Central Academic Boosters. Westerville Central Athletic Boosters. Westerville Central Music Boosters. Westerville Central Theater Boosters. Westerville North Academic Boosters. Westerville North Athletic Boosters. Westerville North Music Boosters, represented by Angela Westlake. Westerville North Theater Boosters. Westerville South Academic Boosters, represented by Sue Holsher. Westerville South Athletic Boosters. Westerville South Music Boosters. Westerville South Theater Boosters. Westerville City Schools IB Fund and the Westerville Partners for Education. That felt like reading at graduation, how exciting. Thank you to all of you for being here, and thank you even more for everything that you do.
Charlie's going to take pictures.
Next up, we have Scheduling Update, and I welcome Mr. Meisner and Ms. Lemon.
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, Mrs. Marshall, and Mr. Dorn. Good evening. We're excited to be here tonight to share a brief update with you about the secondary scheduling process. For those of you that don't know who I am, I'm Matt Meisner. I'm the director of Career and College Pathways.
And my name is Megan Lemon. I'm the district school counselor.
This is an exciting time in secondary world with scheduling. When we are starting to work with our students, we really start with these big questions that you see on the screen. We start with the end in mind for our students. We like to say, in high school world, we get them in to get them out and off to that next thing in their journey. So we do work with our students, our school counselors, our teachers, our parents, our administrators, and we do ask these big questions of our students about what comes next for you after high school? What sorts of problems do you want to solve in the world? What types of activities and work bring you enjoyment? Do you want to work outside? Do you want to work inside? Do you want to work with groups of people? Do you want to work individually? What types of careers interest you? What do you know about the different careers that are out there and available to you? And then we ask them about those big questions about college, entering the workforce directly, or if they're thinking about enlisting in the military. All of those questions come together and help our students make that plan of what their high school experience is going to be.
So in order for students to earn their high school diploma, they have to do three things. They have to earn credits, they have to demonstrate competency, and they have to demonstrate readiness. So there's been no changes to these graduation requirements over the past few years. Students still have to earn 20 total credits in order to graduate from high school. They break down into those specific subject areas. They also have to demonstrate competency by earning a 684 or higher on the Algebra 2 and, or I'm sorry, the Algebra 1 and English 2 OSTs. There are alternate ways for them to demonstrate competency, and they would work with their school counselor to determine ways to do that, if that became necessary. And then, in order to demonstrate readiness, they would earn two diploma seals, which we're going to talk about. So there are 12 total seals that students have the ability to earn. There are nine state-defined seals and three locally-defined seals. There's a variety of ways students can earn these. For example, the Science and Citizenship seals can be earned by getting a B- or higher in those classes, or by earning proficient scores on those OSTs. Students can also earn seals, like the Student Engagement Seal, by participating in extracurricular activities, or the Military Enlistment Seal by joining the military.
Not sure where to point it. There we go. We got it.
All right. So this process actually starts back in December. We have a big meeting. All of our school counselors come together, our administrators come together, and we start talking about what is scheduling going to look like for the next academic year. In that meeting, we hear a lot of presentations. It is like information overload. It is from all of our curriculum directors, all the updates that are coming, any course changes that are happening, any new sequences of courses that we're going to have. All of that gets shared with our counselors so that they're ready to start having these conversations with students and families. In January and February, so I'll explain why this is split into two different bars in just a second, but in January and February, our students get a lot of information, so just thank all that information our counselors just got in December. They bring all that and give it to the kids, our students in January. So you get all the information about course selections, options available to them, our career pathways, career center information, IB, AP, CCP options. They get a ton of information about those offerings. And then in February, our students really then get to start selecting their courses, not now, just for the next year, but for the next four years of their academic career, which I'm excited to share that part with you in just a second. When you look down, March and August, in March, our school counselors meet every single one of our students in 8th grade through 11th grade, meet with their school counselor one-on-one, look at their course plans, look at their course selections for the next year, ensure they're on track for graduation, and also have those conversations if they're having questions about what course would be the next option for them, if they're thinking about College Credit Plus, what are the next steps. And then in August, that is when our students come back and they magically have schedules. It's really just clicking a button, and they're made. I don't know why. I hear Dan laughing at that. So, there's a lot that happens between March and August, more than what we've done on a slide. But while this is broken up into two pieces, is we've made a big shift this year, and we have introduced SchoolLinks as our platform for our students making their course selection. So that's the green up at the top. PowerSchool is where we traditionally did that. PowerSchool will still remain the place where we build the master schedule, but students are no longer making their course selections in PowerSchool. That's going to be done in SchoolLinks, which I'm going to share that with you in just a minute of the awesome features that that has. We have made the shift, like I said, to SchoolLinks. This is a wonderful platform. We've had it in the district now, this is year three, but this year, we're really harnessing the power of that platform to help our students with their course selection. Course selection is one really small piece of SchoolLinks. With this tool, we get a variety of different features, including the course selections, where students are planning their courses. They do career planning in there. They get to investigate different careers by digging through labor statistics, and those are updated in real time. They build their Ohio graduation plan in SchoolLinks. They do college planning, including applying for colleges using the Common App. And then probably my favorite feature this year is we have moved the Academic Planning Guide, that big thick book that we give to every 8th grader in the district, that as soon as it's printed, it's out of date. That is now in SchoolLinks. We still handed out the paper copy this year in a modified version. But the beautiful thing about moving it to SchoolLinks is when we catch a typo or something changes, we can change that in SchoolLinks, and it's updated in real time for our families. But that's not the best feature. The best feature of that is that is translated into 60 different languages, whatever we put into the system. So our EL families now have the option to change that into their native language and see all of the text that we put in there in their native language, which is just a powerful tool that we've relied a lot on translation, physical translation, and verbal translation. And now, when a family's sitting down with their student at home, they can do this in real time. So that's an awesome feature. That's probably my favorite feature so far. The course selection process, so this is a feature in SchoolLinks where all of our students in grades 8 through 11 will now be making their course selections in SchoolLinks. Before, we worked under the model that our students, let's say you're an 8th grader, you made your 9th grade selections, and then when you're a 9th grader, we met with you again, you made your 10th grade, and so on and so on. We've made a big shift this year. It's been a big lift, but it has been awesome to watch this unfold. All of our students now are building their entire high school experience. So our 8th graders are choosing not only their freshman year classes, but their 10th grade, 11th grade, and 12th grade classes. We keep stressing to students and our counselors and our teachers that it's a plan. So we're not asking for them to lock into anything. Nobody's signing up for anything. Nobody's bought the new shiny car yet. We're just asking you to explore those things, make those selections, because we know when students make a plan for something, they strive and push themselves to reach that goal. So it's been awesome to watch that. Our 8th graders have just been a hoot to watch them in there making these selections and having those conversations with their peers about, what are you going to do in Social Studies 11th grade? I'm thinking about taking College Credit Plus. Just some really great conversations have come out of that. It provides our students and families real-time updates on their plans, so our families can see what our students are planning for. Our students can also see as they complete courses, it's going to populate for them the courses they've completed, what grade they've gotten in them, and then they can see how their plan kind of fills in over their four-year experience, which is awesome to see as well. Like I said, it translates, all of this information gets translated into 60-plus different languages. It's a great tool to communicate to our parents and guardians and our school counselors about what our students are thinking about for their post-secondary ideas. This has been a great feature for our counselors to facilitate those one-on-one meetings. I will say, our counselors were very hesitant at first. They thought having the one-year conversation took a lot of time, and they're like, now you want me to have four years' worth of conversation in that same period of time? But really, what we've seen is those conversations are richer, and we're actually starting those conversations more towards the senior year and then working backwards. And that's been a great conversation with our students. And they said that the meetings maybe have taken a little bit longer, but in general have been more enriching conversations. So we're excited to have that happening. And then, of course, this is an integral part of the Ohio Graduation Plan, which are required by the Ohio Department of Education and the Department of Education and Workforce, as well as Ohio Revised Code. The first feature, course planner is one feature. Our students really start in what we call this personalized plan. When I say the words personalized plan, I want you to think the Ohio Graduation Plan. In the Ohio Graduation Plan, there's four key components to that. The first bar that you're seeing where it says "Goals," this is a demo student who is interested in becoming a firefighter. These boxes, these five boxes, get populated over the years of our students doing different work in schooling. So there's a variety of activities, career assessments, that they're completing, and as they complete those, it's filling in those boxes. They don't do them just one time, so we're not asking a 6th grader to lock into a career, but they do it in 6th grade, 7th grade, 8th grade, 9th grade, and every time they're in there doing something, these are shifting and changing to match what their interests are at that time. So it's interesting. I like to share this, you know, all of our 6th graders and 7th graders are going to be YouTube stars. Our 8th graders and 9th graders are going to be the professional athletes. And then our 10, 11, 12th graders are going to be the nurses, doctors, lawyers, the people that are going to save the world one day. So it's interesting to watch that build and shift over time. So that's the first part. Remember, we're starting with that end in mind. The second part is just information for our students and families to see, based off of their goals. It's going to show them what is the minimum education in order to enter into that career. So for a firefighter, they need a post-secondary certificate. So we, they get that information. The middle box is the salary, the median salary for that career. So our students get to see what kind of money they're going to be making. When you look at that, I think the firefighter is about $48,000. All of our students think they're going to be millionaires and have, you know, all these cars and do all these wonderful things, and then they see that, and they're like, $48,000? Like, yeah, that's pretty good money. So, the medium terminology that you see in there, SchoolLinks breaks it down into low, medium, and high salary careers, so that's not anything other than SchoolLinks trying to break those up and show students how those are broken up. And then the third box is my favorite. This is pulled in real time from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and it shares with our students and families what is the projected growth for that career. So is this a career? You could get all this training, you could do great, but if we're not expecting to be hiring more in that profession, maybe we've got to look at our goals some more, we've got to reevaluate. So that's been a great feature. Again, just information. The third box is the academic plan, and it'll pop up there in a second. So the academic plan is the course selection, which we're going to show you in just a second, but this is where our students build those four-year course plans. And then finally, the fourth box is the place where our students choose which two graduation seals they're planning on earning, at minimum two. We tell them, don't select all of them, but don't select none of them, you've got to select at least two. So there's a link up at the top, so students and families can also click on that and find out a lot of information about the graduation seals. I will say, for families and students, this seems to be the most stressful part of the plan, which in reality is like the smallest part of the plan. So, but they get to choose which seals they're going to be planning during. And then finally, our students, once they've finished their plan, they submit it, they need to e-sign it, and then there's a place for them to leave a comment, and that's optional. We really went into this thinking our students are just going to sign it, move on. We have seen some amazing comments from our students in these plans, asking some great questions. I'm thinking about being a firefighter, but I've also thought about being a police officer. What's the difference between the two? Beautiful question, right? And that's some great information for our counselors to see and our parents to see what our students are thinking. So I'm excited to see them using that optional question box or comment box and providing us some more information. Once they've submitted their plan, our counselors love this feature, I love it as well. This can be downloaded as a PDF document, so our counselors love to print a lot of paper and put them in binders and do credit checks and keep track of students. So the first page that you see is their plan minus their course planner. So all that information you just saw for that student would be summarized on this side of the page. And then the second page and third page, this is the course plan, the courses that this student has selected to take over their next four years, including courses they've completed and the grades they've earned. This is a great thing when our counselors or teachers are meeting with parents, this would be a great printout to have in front of them as they're having those conversations.
So this screen is the summary screen for the course plan that the students will see once they start working and building their four-year course plans. As you can see, it breaks it down into the required subject areas for each credit area. So this plan is an example of an incomplete plan, so that's why you're seeing some red bars going across some of those areas. So students will work through each subject area. SchoolLinks walks them through each credit requirement area until all of those boxes are filled and they get green checks. And so that helps them kind of lay out and puzzle together all of the credits that they're going to need over their four years of high school. See if I can get it to work for me. So this screen here shows you what it looks like if you click into one of those subject areas. So this is math. This student has satisfied their Algebra 1 and their geometry requirement. One of the really great things about SchoolLinks is that it pulls over from PowerSchool any credits that they've already earned, as well as those grades. So for our students that are, you know, current 9th graders and above, they don't have to go back and fill that in, it's going to pull that over for them. And then SchoolLinks, based on their credits that they've already earned, it will suggest for them what the next logical credit is in that sequence. So for this student, since they've already done Algebra 1 and Geometry, what comes next in the math curriculum is their Algebra 2 requirement. So it'll pull open, when they click on it, it pulls up a menu that has the three classes that would satisfy that requirement for them, and they can select one. So that's really helpful for students to sort of have some guidance and some guardrails when they're planning those courses, and to kind of have a logical progression from one class to another. So students would select that course, and then, there we go. And then, once everything has been satisfied, you see those red boxes are gone. Now they can see their four-year plan laid out for them. It's really nice because they can visualize how many credits they're taking each school year, as well as in total. It's hard to see because that text is really, really tiny, but in the bottom corner there, it shows them the total credits that they've scheduled for their four years, and at the top of each grade level, it lists how many total credits they've scheduled for each school year. So that's very helpful for students to make sure they have that minimum of five credits. It's helpful for our student athletes to make sure that they have a plan to be eligible every year, and really lay all of those things out. So guardians also have access to view their student's course plan. So this is what the guardian dashboard looks like when they log in. There's a drop-down menu at the top there, and if they click on that, they can then select "Course Plan." And then from the parent view, it looks very similar to that summary view. This is a demo student, so that's why you're seeing some subject areas there that aren't necessarily correlating with our requirements, but it would say English, Math, Social Studies, Science. It would show them their student's course plan, what they've selected, any areas where they still have credits that need to be fulfilled. And so parents cannot edit this. It has to be the student account that edits it, but they can view and they can leave comments as well. So those comments that Matt was talking about earlier, parents have access to that as well.
So we would love to remind our families that all of our parents and guardians in the district have access to SchoolLinks in grades 6 through 12. They can create their guardian account. We pushed this out last year. I had no idea you could actually shut down your Google account by sending so many emails in one day. So fun fact, it shuts you out for 24 hours. So fun fact, it shuts you out for 24 hours, I had no idea. But I sent every parent and guardian in the district their unique access code. We have moved that this year to Power School. So on the Power School parent portal, their unique claim code is right there for them once they've logged in. When they click on that, it will take them right out to the School Links website where they can register their account. Once students register their account, it's linked to them and their student. They can add all of their students on there. It's important to remember, each student has a unique code, but you can link all of your students, so you don't have to log in 10 times. All of your students would be listed there for you, so you can view their plans and see what they've been doing in School Links. This has been just really great for our parents. We've seen a large uptake in our parents logging in and creating accounts now. We keep pushing this out. Our buildings are pushing this out for our families to create their accounts. We've put out some district communication. Once course plans get in there and are get finalized by our counselors, I think we'll see a lot of parent accounts start to get created, because that's where we're going to push them to go check out their student's course plan. And they can see everything that their students doing in there. For our senior students, if you're a senior parent, it's still important to create your account, because you get to see the colleges your students applied to, where they're at in the application process, if they're missing any documents that need to be submitted to a college. They have access to be able to view that and watch their students' progression through the Common App as well. If families or students have questions, we really push them to three places to start. First one, our current teachers. They are a wealth of information. They're the best person to go to if you're asking what the next course would be for your student in a science class. Our science teachers are well-equipped to answer that question and share the differences between the courses. Next would be online. We have a variety of resources on our webpage, on our School G pages. Our buildings also put out a bunch of information on their websites about scheduling to keep families updated where we're at in the process and what they should be doing to assist their student. And finally, our school counselors are kind of the one-stop shop for all of it. So if you have questions about your School Links account, your school counselor can assist you. If you have questions about course sequencing, College Credit Plus versus AP, those are all things that our school counselors are well-equipped and are excited to talk about with families. So those are the three places for people to go if they have questions about scheduling this year and course selection. That's it for us, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? This is really great. I do have one question. For those that might not be able to see where to go in Power School to find their unique link? Is it, when you log in, is it on the menu at the bottom left or just right there?
I think it's on the bottom left.
Okay.
We have the, I don't know if Megan can go back, but we've put out a one-pager that has the steps and the directions with the screenshots of where exactly everything's located on there. But it's off the, it's right where parents would also see their School G account, their access code, they're in the same spot, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a great tool.
Where is that one-pager located?
It is on our website. We've also emailed it out, and it's a great reminder for us to probably send it out again. So we'll send it out again.
Sounds like a great presentation for a parent council.
It does, yes, yes, yes.
Thank you so much, it's outstanding.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, 5.01. May I have a motion to enter into an executive session for the purpose of discussing employment and compensation of a public employee?
So moved.
Second.
Yep.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yep.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Six, seventy-five.
Okay, we will be back. We are back from the executive session. And before we move on to the next agenda item, may I have a motion, second, to approve the resignation agreement as presented with Dr. Joe Clark for personnel reasons effective at the close of business on July 31, 2024?
So moved.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
And next, 6.01. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the regular Board of Education meeting held on Monday, February 12, as presented?
So moved.
Any questions, comments? Okay, Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And we have no public comments. Moving on to 8.01. May I have a motion to approve the financial report and investments for January of 2024?
So moved.
Second.
And Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you, President Meyer, members of the board. So we are going over January, excuse me. For general fund year-to-date receipts, we had $118.2 million. And for year-to-date expenditures, we had $117.1 million. And we ended with an unencumbered general fund balance of $171.7 million. For all funds, we had a total of year-to-date receipts of $166.1 million, year-to-date expenditures of $189.4 million, and we ended with unencumbered fund balance for all funds totaled at $203.7 million. That's all I have.
Any questions or comments? Okay.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve the purchases in accordance with Ohio Revised Code 5705.41D1 and Board Policy 66320?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Thank you again. So we have two then annals on the agenda, well, two from Continental Office invoices for missed add-ons to existing projects at McVay Elementary and Wilder Elementary. These amounts were within the budget, we just missed getting the purchase order open. And then we have an invoice with Cisco Cleveland for the Food Services Department. And this is due to the timing of some of the invoices with some confusion with just new people in positions. And there are some credits that will be applied as well in the future. Everything was budgeted for them.
Great, any questions or comments? All right, Ms. Marshall?
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have, is it okay if we take the consent order? I'm trying to ask one, okay. May I have a motion to approve the personal consent agenda, 9.01 through 9.12?
So moved. Second.
Great, Mr. Cooper?
Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Deputy Superintendent Dorn. This evening's personnel consent agenda includes action items with regard to resignations, retirements, contract status changes, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. Additionally, there is proposed change to the AAS guidelines and MOU with our Westerville Educators Association. We have three staff members who have announced their retirement on this evening's agenda. Jan Horn will be retiring at the end of this school year with 30 years of service. Mark Williams will be retiring after five years of service to Westerville City Schools, and Philip West after 35 years of service. We appreciate everything these three have done for our students, our staff, and our community, and certainly wish them the best in their years of retirement ahead. With regard to the administrative approved staff guidelines, or the AAS guidelines, two changes are recommended for your approval this evening. The first change includes identifying personal leave for building aides to be used in quarter-day increments instead of two-hour increments. This aligns more closely their hours that they specifically work. The second change removes the position of district bilingual aide specialist, as that position is now more accurately identified as the parent outreach liaison. Lastly, the MOU details our mutual agreement with the WEA for a part-time teacher to move to a full-time role for the remainder of this school year. This is due to student needs. The teacher will be given the opportunity to move back to the part-time position if she so desires as we go into next year, and as long as she provides notification within the requested deadline. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And we have no old business and no new business, so moving along. Excuse me. May I have a motion to approve the generous donations that were donated to the Westerville City School District?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Thank you. Yeah, nearly $60,000, that's amazing.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And next, may I have a motion to approve out-of-state overnight field trips?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Baldwin?
Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Mr. Dorn and Ms. Marshall. I have one out-of-country field trip for you to consider this evening. This is going to be students traveling to Costa Rica, 22 students from all three high schools over spring break. They will miss one day of school on the front end, April 1, coming back from the trip. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
What is the trip for? So it is an international trip. We have teachers that will plan international trips with EF tours for students to access different international travel.
Anything else? All right. Thank you.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And 12.03, may I have a motion to accept amended amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorize the necessary tax levies in certifying them to the county auditor?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, could you talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you again. So we do this every year. So the board passed a resolution back last, probably around the same timeframe, for the estimated 23 amounts and rates. So this is actually amending those amounts and rates based on the 2023 reappraisal that just took place, that's been approved by the Budget Commission.
Any questions or comments? All right.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve filing complaint against the valuation of real property for tax year 2023?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall?
Yes, thank you again. So we have several resolutions in front of you. This was something new with House Bill 126 a couple of years ago, that requires that the board pass separate resolutions for each property owner, for the parcels. So all totaled, we have total sales price with all of these properties combined of $191.8 million. The current fair market value of these properties is around $91 million. So the change with this, with this, setting it right with the sales price, would be an increase in property value of $100.7 million, which means these properties are currently undervalued in total by over $100 million. And so that is why we do this. We work with our attorneys. We pay our attorneys by the hour. They do not receive any money based on whether or not we see property value changes through this process. But I would recommend that the board approve this, so we can go through the board of revision process to get those properties right-sized with values, so they are paying their fair share.
Thank you.
It's only fair to the other taxpayers.
Exactly. Yeah.
Okay. Ms. Marshall?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And may I have a motion to approve construction contracts for the 2024 capital improvement project?
So moved. Second.
And Mr. Schwartz?
Thank you. Good evening, President Meyer, Vice President Altman, members of the board, Mr. Dorn and Ms. Marshall. Those that don't know, I'm Doug Schwartz, Director of Facilities for Westerville City Schools, happy to be here tonight. I'm here tonight to provide information in support of a board resolution requesting approval to award construction contracts for two 2024 capital improvement projects at Emerson Elementary and Minerva Park Middle School. The first package, known as Bid Package Two, is for Emerson Elementary. It's a renovation project. It has both interior renovations and a couple of things of note. We're expanding and renovating the clinic and the office area to bring it up to district standards. We're also, Tim Siffler likes this one, we're making improvements to the MDF, or main tech room in the building. There's also painting in classrooms and miscellaneous finishes throughout. There's also exterior work. Those that know the building, one of the major features of that building is the kind of lace-like metal work working all around the building, or some would say the fire escape plans. Those are being cleaned, prepped, and painted again this summer to continue their value and use to the building. And the contractor of record being recommended is Pepper Construction. There were two bids for that bid package. The second bid package, known as Bid Package Four, is for the Minerva Park Middle School. It's a new athletic storage building, or the first in their case. It will serve the competition and field facility that's actually located behind Hawthorne Elementary, if you weren't familiar with that. The storage building is modeled after a similar structure at Walnut Springs Middle School. As such, just as it does at Walnut, it's going to store the track equipment, the football equipment, the sound system, and other similar components. The contractor being recommended is GHM Incorporated, and there were also two public bids for that as well submitted. Both projects are included in Phase One of the district's facilities master plan, which was approved by the voters in 2017. Both projects also have a milestone completion date of August 1, 2024, so this August. The bidding process was conducted in alignment with Ohio Revised Code and Westerville City School policies, with an initial public advertisement notice on January 22, 2024, and a bid opening on February 13, 2024. Given these facts, and in concert with our architecture firm, who always does due diligence with and for us, we wish to recommend that the board authorize the award of construction contracts for the two bid packages to the qualified low-bid firms as follows. Pepper Construction for Bid Package Two, again, that's the elementary, Emerson Elementary, which is a renovation project. It's in the amount of $655,187. And the second package to GHM Incorporated for Bid Package Four, Minerva Park Middle School, the new athletic storage building, that is in an amount of $262,054. And with that, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments? Thank you.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
And we do have one public comment, Mr. Luke Brooks. Just a reminder, each, and that you will have five minutes to address the board. A timer will be shown on the screen, and Mr. Dorn will call time when five minutes has elapsed. Please keep your comments professional, avoid the use of inappropriate language, and refrain from identifying individuals in event of a complaint. Please address your comments to the board and not to the audience. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, President Meyer, members of the board, Ms. Marshall, and Mr. Dorn. My name is Luke Brooks. As you stated, I'm a parent in the district, member of the community. We moved here about two and a half years ago. I appreciate the opportunity to comment this evening. So I'm here this evening to make comment in regards to House Bill 68, and more specifically, the district's response to this bill that came in the form of a communication sent to the community on January 26 of 2024. I watched the previous session, and there was another member of the community who had asked about the origin of the comment. I didn't see an answer to that, so I'm bringing my comments here, assuming that because it was sent to the district, that it was approved by the board. So with that said, I would like to pick out a couple phrases from the statement to comment on. The first is, there was a statement in Paragraph Three, Line Two, of stating, "While we have no choice but to comply with the law." And then again, in Paragraph Three, Line Four, it states, "Despite any present and future roadblocks implemented by state leaders." This particular phrase stuck out to me, as someone who's a little bit uninitiated with kind of how these boards typically work, but is much more kind of maybe politically charged than I would have expected. And I don't think I fully appreciated kind of the role of the board to make such statements. And so I appreciate the opportunity, as member of the community, to come forward and to make my own statement as well in response. And so I appreciate that. And then, in Point Two, language states, and a couple of times throughout the statement, but in one particular line of Paragraph Three, Line Four, it states, "The Westerville City School District remains committed to providing educational experiences and environments that support all students." More specifically, the part I'm pointing out here is the word "all," which is used a couple of times in all caps, I suppose, for emphasis. I'm having a hard time with this statement specifically because, kind of based on this statement that was approved and distributed, the board does appear to have some more concern for some certain groups of students over others. In this particular case, there's a minority group that's potentially, could pose a risk to a larger group. And my comment here, I guess, is that I would, it would be helpful for these sorts of statements to have some transparency or honesty as far as what is being valued over others. And so when I see the word "all" or "everyone," I think of, you know, there's another group potentially that could be disadvantaged by such positions. And then lastly, there was, there's a comment, obviously it's on the banner, but also in the statement a couple of times of "where you belong." You know, I mentioned earlier that I have a, one student, I have a kindergarten-aged daughter, moved here a couple of, couple of years ago, was excited to be a part of the community. We were, our hope was to send her off to a school where we, we believed, hey, we want her to get a great education, feel very supported by the school. We were hoping to feel support as parents, as we kind of come alongside the school district to raise our child, our children. And so far, we've had a great experience. We really love, our daughter goes to Mark Twain. She has a great experience, loves every aspect of it, her teachers, her principal, her friends. But specifically, I think our concerns as parents are, okay, what comes after Mark Twain? And what is, what does kind of the district's position on some of these items mean for our family? So my daughter, you know, what are, you know, as she grows, and what are her interests as, you know, if she wants to get into athletics or some sort of, have an opportunity like that in the future, what opportunities is she going to be missed out on because of maybe being disadvantaged by such a position? So it's caused our family, kind of in light of that comment and some other thing, or that statement and some other things, to question this "where you belong" statement, and wonder if this is where our family belongs. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I know this isn't a dialogue as much, it's just an opportunity to make comments, but I appreciate the opportunity and thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. 14.01, board comments. Anybody want to start?
So just really quick. I want to make sure that everyone understands where, how I feel. I will only speak for myself. I stand with the LGBTQ+ community, as well as every other child in this district. All of my decisions will be aligned with that.
And I would like to say the same, and I'm the mother of three daughters. So I, that is always a part of my thinking as the parent of three daughters. You know, what is best for them and what is best for all children? And I don't see a conflict when I, when we say "all." That's just what it means to me. It means "all," means "every." So I want your daughter to feel like this is the place where she belongs, and for her to truly belong, and for every other child to feel that too, and to truly be welcomed. So that's what it means to me.
I would agree with what Jen just said. There are times when it is possible for equally well-meaning people to disagree about what is "all." I think for those of us sitting here, and for me, "all" does simply mean "all." And sometimes that requires us to look very carefully at how we make decisions and how all the groups are impacted by those decisions. So I never like to look at anything as completely global. I like to look at it as, this is what we believe, and then identify how we implement that going forward. I do think that your daughter will find that she very much does belong as she moves through Twain and then moves through secondary school. It is something I watch very carefully to see who feels like they do belong and who may not. And it's when they feel they may not that we have to really dig in and find out why, and identify ways to increase the opportunities, capacities, and perceptions of belonging. So it is, unfortunately, during my time on the ward, things have become much more politically charged than they used to be. And I wish that it were not that way as much as it is, because it causes us to pit some people against other people. And in a place where we truly believe that is a place everyone should belong, we also have to pay attention to how we avoid unnecessary pittings against each other. And for me, that's something that means a great deal.
So I don't believe it's an either-or, it's an "and." And I truly, like Sid, it's where we all belong, and those can coexist. I'd agree that your child, I hope, will continue to really enjoy her time here. I do want to thank Parent Counsel for coming tonight. I want to thank all the volunteers for all of the amazing hours that were reported, and I want to wish the retirees good luck and enjoy. With that... May I have a motion? Oh, yep, sorry. Oh, so the board will meet in regular session on Monday, March 18, 2024, at 6:00 PM at the Early Learning Center, which is here. And next, may I have a motion to enter into executive session for the purposes of discussing the employment and compensation of public employees?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Valentine?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
7:52. May I have a motion to adjourn?